Ready. Good evening, and we are now meeting on December, September 29, 2020, for our public work session concerning, this is a policy work session. Superintendent Mills.
We can do the pledge and the roll call.
Roll call. It's been a long day. Trustee.
Let's do the pledge.
Oh, Chinese.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Candelaria.
Present.
Trustee Zulno.
Present.
Trustee King.
We're here.
And trustee Mamala is also present. Let the record reflect that all five trustees are present, and the superintendent of school. Trust Superintendent Miller.
Thank you. Good evening, and good evening to those watching online or in the future. I wanted, before we get started with the policy update, I want to just let anybody know who's watching how they can follow along. Mr. Massey, can you pull up the School City homepage, please? And Jake, if you can hit the screen up there. So if you want to follow along with the policies we're going to be looking at, you can go to the Board, and go to Board Docs, the second item down. Whoops. Then click Enter Public Site. Click on the Public Work Session. View the Agenda. Click the item on the left that says Policy Review. And then there is the listing of each of the documents will be going on. And it's nearly impossible to try to put them all on the screen and scroll to the exact same place. So anyone who would like to follow along, that's the easiest way to review or see the policies we're proposing to update. All right, thank you, Mr. Massey. If you want to switch back to Dr. Green's presentation. And, Dr. Green, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, good evening, trustees and Superintendent Miller. I'm going to begin with the listing of policies that you have. First, I'll begin with explaining the administrative policies that you received in your packet. Those are policies that have already been updated by the Board. And so essentially, the administrative piece of it is what we do in-house, the actual procedure of running through those policies that have already been approved by the Board. So they are not listed for approval tonight. So if you look at your binder, it has tabs so that you can pick, this is just a little bit loud for me. It has tabs so that you can see exactly which policy we're working on. So if you'll go to tab number one. The first policy that we're working on is policy number 0151.1. And what this is, is this is a revision of an original policy, which is basically in response to Senate Enrolled Act 549. This policy basically says that we must, as a district, host a hearing for our school budget and for our finance. What this does is it updates the Board as to what our finances are looking like on an annual basis. The superintendent is charged with making sure that this happens, whether he does it or he delegates that to someone else. And so this is reported as an annual meeting of school finance. Basically, if you're looking for the Indiana Code for that, that is Indiana Code 20197-4. Are there any questions about policy number one?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. One question.
Sure.
Trustee Mamala. Madam President?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
Thank you. The Finance Director, who is that currently?
The Finance Director and the CFO is considered to be Ms. Alicia Pritchett. We do have our consultant who assists with all of those types of things, anything financial, and that's Matt Reese.
So, if I remember looking at the old, the former policy. Maybe that's some, is there one in here about the Financial Board? Okay, we'll move on until I see it. So Alicia, Mrs. Pritchett is the Finance Director currently.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's look at policy number two. Policy number two is policy 1520. That's Employment of Administrative Additional to the Superintendent. If you'll notice, basically, it outlines the Assistant Superintendent, Director of Special Education, the Principals, Assistant Principals, but also we've added the Directors. That would be the Director of Elementary and the Director of Secondary. There is also consideration for the fact that you have to employ a Director of Special Ed, all of which School City of Hammond currently has. It also outlines some special things about contract. Each one of those contracts, excluding the Special Ed Director, each one of those contracts must be given for one to three years. The Special Ed Director initially will receive a two-year contract. We cannot go over those three years in a contract. Essentially, every employee in this category would be able to have either between the one to three years. They also put another provision in there that when a contract must be bought out, contracts cannot be bought out for more than one year or $250,000. And this is all new language that has been added into this particular policy. And then, basically, there is room for choice on page two of three. And it's asking, how will we select these employees? And essentially, only those candidates for employment recommended by the superintendent will be employed by the corporation, which is our current practice. If you switch to page three of three, there were some choices there that coincide with current policy that we have, and these are not changes. These are essentially what we currently have, but the choices given again because there was a policy update. Relatives of administrators may be employed by the Board, provided the staff member being employed is not placed in a position in which he or she would be supervised directly by their relative. So in other words, one of the things that we have done to kind of alleviate that is we've made sure that we are not placing family members in the same schools, our departments, if we can avoid that, and definitely not with direct supervision. Basically, if you look down to the very last one, the Board shall review a candidate's previous work experience in determining his or her salary. The reason why that is not marked, it is not marked because, basically, when that recommendation is made by the superintendent, that has already been done. And in administrative policy, it already has it listed that that is one of the roles of the superintendent, to make sure that that particular aspect of the job is done.
That box is checked, Dr. Green.
Oh, it shouldn't be "I have not recommended" right next to it.
But that was confusing, because I thought it was checked. So it's not being checked?
It is not being checked. I am saying that that is not recommended.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
That's all of that policy. So is there discussion on that besides the fact it was confusing? Because it is checked, but then I put "not recommended." I apologize for the error.
Trustee Mamala. Trustee King. On the past chart that you all had given us, there is a Director of Curriculum. So are we, will that not be included as part as a position?
It is a Director position. And if you notice on page two of three, we have listed other positions, and we have Directors written in there.
Well, could you explain H, and H1?
At-will employees.
Yes.
Administrators other than the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Special Ed Principal, and Assistant Principal, one of the following, will be at-will employees. Because they have teacher contracts, we can't specifically call them at-will. Because when somebody's contract as an administrator is taken away, they still have their teacher contract, unless they have committed some act that would void their teacher contract.
Okay, well, and explain to me, in the previous Board policy, relatives of administrators may be employed by the Board, dah 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 dah. So, but prior to this, this was never written, was it?
It's always been written.
So, so is this a, so what is this? Is it an inclusion, you know, you have these Xs?
What it's basically saying is that is something we still agree with. Whenever a policy is updated, they always give you the option of reevaluating the policy in whole. And so basically, what they're saying is that, again, we want you to look at this, and are you still feeling this way about this current policy?
So we are supporting nepotism, basically, in writing?
No, that's basically saying that we will not place relatives in the same area.
I understand that, but you're still hiring them. You're still hiring, we're still hiring relatives of administrators.
Absolutely, we're hiring relatives of all of our employees. If you have a really good employee, you don't want to say that, "I'm not going to hire you just because you're related to someone in the district."
I'm just saying, this is the first time I've seen it in writing. So you're saying it has always been in writing?
It's always been in writing, that we will not put them in direct supervision of their family members.
So perhaps it should be relatives of all employees? I mean, you got, you just have administrators.
This particular policy is adhering to only administrators.
Okay. Well, is there somewhere, is there somewhere in the policy to include all employees?
There absolutely is. We have a nepotism policy.
Share there, share, just share that with me down the road.
I will.
Okay. So that was a little confusing. There are these Xs, it looks like. They're not doing it, but obviously you are. Thank you, Madam President.
Other questions? Policy number three.
Put them in a different order. So just give me a moment, because I have them in the order that you gave me with all of my comments.
Which is why we gave you a book with tabs, so that you could go through them rather quickly.
I don't have my notes on these tabs. I have my notes on the order in which you gave me. Okay, so where are we now?
Policy 322002.
3120.
08. This one makes it difficult.
312008.
3220.02.
3120.
I have 322002.
3120.
322002.
That's not what we have.
It's not.
What's the title?
322002, that's what I have.
Supplemental payments for teachers.
Right here before tab four?
Yes.
Well, we're skipping one.
We just.
If you're looking at the packet that you received, it's not the same. That's why we gave you a booklet with tabs.
So just don't even look at the computer. Is that what you're saying, don't even look at the computer?
Mr. Miller, which one do you have next?
I have, I have 3120 next. Yeah, 3120.
Right.
Employment of Personnel for Extracurricular Activities.
Okay, 312008, and I'm assuming that trustee Candelaria, that would be at 24, tab 24 for you.
Well, I apologize to the Board, because I wrote all my notes on the packet that you gave me in the same order. And it's, I don't want to take the time to fumble, but I still want to ask my questions. I feel like I'm at a disadvantage here. But I'll do the best I can.
Dawn, 3120 for my binder is behind 24.
Right, that's, you have the same binder, apparently, that trustee Candelaria has and trustee Miller.
But not me. No, we all have.
Wait a minute. No, I have 3120 in both spots. 3120 is behind 24.
Can we just go to 3120.08?
Yeah, that's what I, on four.
We just made, like, I'm not sure that one is in here.
I'm on.
312008.
Okay.
And it's going to be around 24, I think, tab 24.
24.
Does anybody have or not have it?
I have it on number three.
Well, go on to tab 24, yeah. Oh, we have a duplicate.
Okay.
On four is 24.
It's.
Yeah, behind three and behind 24 are the.
If we can just go to 312008.
Yeah.
We can talk about it.
That's fine.
Okay. 312008, Employment of Personnel for Extracurricular Activities. What this basically does is this talks about your coach hiring, equipment fitting, and all of those types of things. Basically, what it is saying is that we are going to train our coaches. And there are three things that we are explicitly saying that we're going to train in on page 2.4. The Board will require that all head coaches, assistant coaches, within a two-year period, will complete the following training: concussion protocol, sudden cardiac arrest, and heat-related medical issues. That's the end of the choice option. All of those things are things that we want our coaches to be trained in. That's on page 2.4, or two of four, rather. Then if you switch to page three of four, the very next page, the corporation shall report to the association, meaning the Athletic Association, the following: kidnapping, criminal confinement, rape, criminal deviant conduct, child molesting, child exploitation, and then all of the remaining crimes that could be committed. All of those things must be reported, whether we terminate the coach or not. If they are in our employ, we have to report them, because we are obligated reporters.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Any misconduct or any type of non-professional behavior that constitutes a crime must be reported to the Athletic Association. And that goes for only, this is only referring to coaches.
Madam President?
Trustee Zulno.
I see this excludes football program. I take it there's a separate.
There is a separate protocol for football.
Football.
It goes into a little bit more detail.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the training starts when?
The training is automatic before they can start doing their practices and things like that.
So they will have completed it before they?
Absolutely. Other questions? Hopefully, we're back on track now, because I am looking at 412008.
Yeah.
And that should be under tab four. Please say yes.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Okay, so 412008, Extracurricular Activities. Again, this is another one where we are looking at who can be employed for this, what type of training that we will be doing with those employees. Such part-time employees, and these would be our part-time employees. And so you're looking at your laypeople, coaches that don't work for the district possibly, classified staff, support staff, all of those folks that normally would not have this role. And so essentially, are we saying that they will be trained? Yes, we're saying that every two years, they will go to similar training. If they become a head coach, if they become assistant coach, whatever their role is, they will still be responsible for concussion protocol, sudden cardiac arrest, and heat-related medical issues. Just to make sure that we are consistent, they will also be reported, and this is on three of four, if they have any infractions that would be considered criminal intent. And we are, again, obligated reporters, even though they are not, they may not be normal employees of the district. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope, next one.
And we are looking at policy number 511101. Or, excuse me, that's 5111 is what you should have, excuse me. Determination of Legal Settlement. Are we still okay with that one?
Yes.
All right.
Which bracket is it?
5111.
Which tab?
Five.
Okay. Thank you.
So this policy was revised to reflect the option for parents, adult students, and juvenile courts conducting certain proceedings to elect to extend the date of a student's withdrawal. So in other words, if a person is in process of some type of court proceeding, then we want to make sure that they can still stay within the school district if they should need to. That extension is extended all the way through the end of the semester. And it could possibly run into the next semester if the event occurs at the end of the semester. So essentially, it is not disrupting the educational process of that student. The other thing that we're looking at here is transportation. Who's responsible for the transportation? Option one says that transportation from and to the site of the new legal settlement will not be provided by the school corporation. And this is something that's commonly done. Basically, if someone has to stay in the district, we want them to try and provide that transportation, because it's quite possible they could go to a district that's way outside of ours. And so we want to make sure that we don't obligate or overobligate ourselves in a situation where we would not be able to conduct that transportation. And so a lot of times, a negotiation goes on with the receiving school district. If you'll look down on page two of five, a student has been expelled from another school corporation or expelled from a non-public school. Essentially, those are not students that could be taken into School City of Hammond. Indiana Code says that if a student has been expelled from another school, we do not take them back into Hammond schools, or any school. Essentially, what we are saying there is that we are not asking to honor exception or option I. If you'll look down at the middle, just lower than the middle of the page. And we are not doing that because that student is described as a student who has been expelled. Okay, if you'll look at Non-Public School Transfer Students, which is on three of five, right in the middle of the page, we have open enrollment. So really, this doesn't apply until we change that. If for some reason down the road that would change, again, this policy will come up for some type of revision, and we would be able to change that and basically unmark that box. If you'll look at page four of five, Transportation, or if you go down to just below the middle of the page on four of five, Transportation will not be provided by School City of Hammond Corporation for transfer students enrolled as a transfer student, unless that student has an IEP, Individualized Education Plan, and then that is a part of their plan. And therefore, we are obligated to provide transportation. And we currently have students in that, in that situation. And then checked also on five of five at the very top, Students Without Legal Settlement Attending Alternative Education Programs, any programs that we have within the district that a student may be signed up for. Basically, legal settlement does not, is not a requirement, and therefore, we have checked it for that reason. Most of the checks that you don't see, it's because it addresses tuition. And because we have open enrollment, we are not asking for tuition. Therefore, we do not check that box. Because what it says is that the Board will then ask for tuition, and that's not accurate to our policy. Questions? 5111.01, Homeless Students. A lot of this was language change. But a student, I think an important thing to realize is that this new language was really adopted to make sure that we make sure we're doing the staffing training. That's a really big thing on how to recognize when a student is homeless and understanding the definition of homelessness. If a student lives with a grandmother who is not someone who is in custody or holding custody of that child, they can be considered homeless. And so the training process that goes with that is to make sure that we are identifying those homeless characteristics and making sure that we're doing something to provide some type of social assistance, or at least directing our families to that when it, when we see that situation occurring. It also discusses transportation, if you look at page three of six. Page three of six, the transportation is basically that when a student is deemed as homeless, we do provide that transportation under McKinney-Vento and some other options that we have available to us. Basically, we are responsible for transporting that student where they need to go, or bringing them into our district if that is what we're supposed to be doing. So if for some reason, someone is deemed as non-homeless, on page four of six, if they would like to file appeal, they can do that in Student Services. And basically, they have 10 days to file their appeal. And then pages five of six, we're looking at the fact that we are talking about that staff training that needs to take place, making sure we define homelessness, looking for those signs of homelessness, and steps to take when we have identified that student. All looking at a needs assessment for our students. Questions about homeless?
How many homeless students do we have in the district?
That's a question I would have to look up. I'm not sure of that.
Appreciate that.
Madam President?
Trustee Zulno.
Has staff training already taken place for some people, or is that coming?
We have assigned on staff someone who is responsible for McKinney-Vento. And essentially, anybody who's associated with that practice, we basically do train them. I can't say that our entire staff has been trained on that. But as obligated reporters, we basically have to look for signs of any type of child neglect or, you know, malnutrition and things like that, or looking for signs of something's just not right.
Thank you.
Okay, 5223. We're changing the word absences to release time for religious instruction. And so basically, what we're doing here is we're, excuse me, let me get back on page here. We are looking at revision to the policy, again, from Senate Enrolled Act 373. And it wanted, we needed to clarify who exactly we're talking to and what exactly we are going to do when a student is asking for an exemption from our current curriculum so that they can include something with the religious instruction. And so basically, are we saying that we're going to give credit for this? Are we saying that we're just going to give release time? Well, currently, the way our policy reads is that we're only giving release time for that. We are not giving actual outside credit. And I think at this point, we are continuing that process where they can get the release time, and this is with written documentation from a parent or legal guardian. However, we are not offering credit from the school for this religious instruction.
I do want to say, though, that we can, with the update to this, count them present, so it doesn't affect our attendance percentages. So that is a positive.
Trustee Mamala, does this policy also relate to when they have issues with certain foods, cafeteria foods, or anything like that?
We have to honor that anyway.
Okay.
And so basically, that's automatically done.
Okay, fine.
That is a separate policy. I remember, we discussed it maybe last spring, that one. But we do make those accommodations for, for students and their foods, yes.
It's actually the next one.
Okay.
Okay, and so policy 5335 is appropriate here. Care of Students With Chronic Health Conditions. Again, another revised policy. And all this one is doing is breaking down some of the things that we have to adhere to that can be considered as chronic diseases or chronic problems that our students may have. So basically, as you noticed, the checkmarks, and I apologize that the checkmarks don't look clear, but we're talking about peanut allergies, asthma, diabetes, seizure disorder. All of those things are accounted for here. And it also talks about the Individualized Health Plan. They're trying to change that language a little bit and make it basically a health plan for every student. And so essentially, what they're doing is they're breaking it down, and they're just spelling out some of these things that were deemed as questionable before. These are actual chronic illnesses that we need to provide training for. And how is that training provided currently? That currently, are currently. That currently, currently, we may do in-person training. With our new teachers, we often do. And we also do our electronic training, which is basically, they have to go on a computer and they have to do a series of videos and then they have to answer a series of questions. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, fifty-six hundred, student discipline. So fifty-six hundred is basically saying that our policy must, again, reflect a change that occurred in 2018. We have to have a discipline policy that models a code of conduct that is established by the state. And so what it is, it's supposed to be a little bit more student-friendly, student-centered, looking at the student from an aspect that they will assume responsibility for their own actions. We do understand that sometimes things may get to a point where you have to do something that is considered more punitive. But in this particular case, we're trying to get them to conform to reasonable standards and socially acceptable behavior, respect person and property, respect others' rights, and obey constituted authority. So all of these things are to make sure that we are not arbitrary in the discipline that is dispensed, that we do not discriminate, that we do not demean, and that we do not violate any constitutional rights of any student. In other words, the punishments must fit the crime, but they must be learning experiences as well. The superintendent will appoint a committee of staff members. And again, this is something that is a fluid document. Currently, it says staff members, but you can include more people to that. But our current policy says staff members, and that is what is checked on this policy as well. More can be included, as I said before.
Well, how would you get that included?
Basically, before voting on this policy, we would put those people in there.
Well, I would, if I may, I would hope that we would include all, students, parents, and community representatives. For what now?
To review the student code of conduct on an annual basis.
And that is definitely doable. So for the next reading of this, we'll actually have all of those in there when we present that for approval by the board. The superintendent will report to the board annually methods of discipline used, any misconduct that may be occurring in the district, and how he's proposing that these things will be handled. And that is a basic code of conduct, which the district does have, which is currently being updated with a series of people. Basically, he'll present that as a finished product. Any other questions on that?
Madam President?
Trustee Zono.
It's a quick one here. The new green part with the superintendent will request that the State Department of Education provide information. I see that's not checked, though. I was just kind of wondering why. Wouldn't that just be a help to us?
I think part of that might be for districts. Because like, again, these are Neola policies that they send out to every district.
And the other, then I've remembered now why it's not checked. It says that you have to request that help from the State Department of Education. No, it's actually not something that we have to do. It's something that if you find yourself, maybe you can't come up with your own code of conduct or you find yourself at odds with how to deal with discipline issues, they will come and they will provide a training. However, we do have a code of conduct. And so I did not mark that because it's basically saying that we will do that and that is not something we've had to do in the past.
Okay, thank you.
If I could quickly, the history in Hammond behind this is that we used to have a student-parent guide that was very vague. Like, it said maybe weapons, and then it had a description. But there was a lot of interpretation that could have been had at each building. And part of an OCR investigation said that we need to develop a code of conduct that was consistent and had consistent consequences defined in the code of conduct that would go across all of our buildings because we were statistically suspending and putting kids out of school for minority groups higher than any other group. So that was an OCR thing. So Hammond's had this in place for two years now. This is actually the third year now that we've had it in place. The current group that I had looking at this was comprised of administrators and teachers. But if the board approves to add these other groups in, then we will expand that before I come present to you. But there is, I can just tell you, and we've mentioned this before, some of the concerns with teachers have been the attendance policy, the cell phone policy. Those, we had some progress and a plan ready, and then COVID hit. But we had talked about things like having a locker in the office for cell phones and things such as that, instead of putting it on the teachers to keep at their desk. Had issues before with that, where phones are stolen off of teachers' desks and all sorts of things. But so we've had some progress to presenting you a new revision. If the board, once they add the others, I will incorporate them into a committee where we look at this and then come back to you with an updated student code of conduct.
Madam President?
Yes?
So you're saying, you know, COVID hit, and prior to that, you all had a committee and you were actually working on those other things we've been talking about for several months in terms of the cell phone and all those.
We did.
To try to make sure every student, you know, could learn and not be distracted. So is there another policy connected to this in terms of when a student is disciplined? When is the parent, how are the parents contacted? Isn't that a new law?
That's a part of the code of conduct.
Okay.
And it is in accordance with the new law.
With the new law?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Madam President?
Trustee Miller.
I would support Trustee Blake King's request to add these other constituencies as well.
I didn't know I needed somebody to.
Okay, if there are no more questions, can we move to Policy fifty-six ten?
Yep.
That's suspension and expulsion of students. This is a definite one. Trustee King was just mentioning that there was some new law that was put out. And with that new law, one of the things they said is students have to be allowed to make up homework. So basically, any homework that, or work that is provided in that class should be provided to students who have been suspended or expelled. What the law does not say is that you have to give credit for that. What it says is if the school district gives credit for it, basically, it has to be completed within a timely fashion. So what this does is it actually breaks down further. If we are completing work, do they have to complete, or are they allowed the opportunity to complete quizzes and tests? And the recommendation here is that they would not be allowed to complete their quizzes and tests.
I think it was the other.
I would hope so.
The student shall.
Shall.
Oh, shall not.
That's been the biggest issue with this. Kids are, Madam President, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My experience with this whole scenario is that students were, you know, suspended, expelled, and parents were adamant, and all they wanted was the child's homework so they wouldn't get so far behind. And they were denied that. And but my understanding, the law always indicated that you should be able to get a child's homework because you're keeping that child, this corporation will be keeping that child further behind. So now what is the deal? And I know I've called Mr. Miller a hundred times on that because I get the call all the time when students are suspended, and that's their issue. They can't get the homework.
And that is not the issue here. The issue here is saying that they can get their homework, but they shall not be able to come in and take the test.
Well, why is that?
Because they're expelled from school.
Well, at some point, they should be able to take the test. What's the point of letting them, I mean?
I think there's a little confusion here. This particular, sub item A is just for students who are suspended, not students who are expelled. And I, Dawn, you had checked in my book and maybe the others too, that they shall be allowed to take missed tests or quizzes when they return to school. And that's what I, that's my feeling about it, too, for suspensions, that yes, when they come back, they should have an opportunity.
And I'm arguing expulsions.
Okay.
I am arguing expulsions.
Okay, all right.
Because an expulsion, for someone to come back in and take the test, they would have to come back into the school. So that was my only point there.
Okay, yeah, I think the wires were just getting crossed.
Okay.
But yeah.
All right, so are we moving on from now?
Moving on.
Okay, if a student brings a weapon to school, namely, something like a deadly weapon, a gun, or a knife, they shall be expelled for a period of not more than one year. And that is a shall not, a may in that particular case. And that goes along with law. Okay. New language includes that the corporation shall annually prepare a list that basically offers education to those students who have been expelled. We currently have that. We offer that out of our Student Services. And basically, we provide that to any parent when a child has been expelled from school. And that's a list of services that will provide education for those students.
What page is that?
That is on page two of three. And that's all the green of the new language. On page three of three, the very first thing is something that there may be a little discussion on. The Board of Trustees has voted, and the recommendation is not to hear expulsion appeals. Instead, appeals of expulsion must be filed with the county court. Now, basically, here's what we are currently already doing. You pay a person to hear all appeals that go through our process. You pay an attorney to hear those. So there are quite a few expulsions. It's difficult sometimes to get the board together to do something like policy. And I'm just wondering, are we really aware of how many expulsion hearings the board might have to hear in person?
I am. Sat through many of them. And what we found and why we put before this policy in place is because it could run into a conflict of interest. A parent of a student may know a board member, call them up and say, you know, my son or daughter is going to be coming in front of you for an expulsion. And sometimes that may sway the decision of that member. So it's better that we do not get involved with it at all.
So let me just review that the board currently voted to hear, like, right now, the board is scheduled to hear all expulsion hearings. We have not had any because of COVID. I think what Dr. Green is suggesting that the, when we are face-to-face and this does happen, this will be a really big burden on the board.
Yeah, it is.
And we're suggesting, bringing it back to you, that you have paid resources in place for this that are fair and impartial. But that's why Dr. Green said there might be some discussion about this.
It's better that we stay out of it. It is time-consuming. We did that in the past. But it's better that we do not get involved. We have someone else come in, we have someone else do it because that's something a board should not get involved in.
Trustee Mamala.
Trustee King.
Why did we vote to do it in the first place? I remember vaguely, but someone would have to jog my memories to why we said we wanted to do it.
Well, I know I didn't vote for it.
I don't know. Well, what was the vote?
So I'm just saying, what I'm saying is it should be, you know, revised. The board should not get involved in it. We're not going to have time for sitting for expulsions and doing all that. It's too time-consuming. And it's best that someone from the outside sits there. Like, we had, in the past, we had past Principal Nance, right?
That's correct.
And who else did we have? Past Principal White?
Castle White.
Castle White. Those are the individuals that should be sitting and listening because they were past administrators of schools. It's just best that we keep out of it.
Well, I don't agree.
If I could remind the board also, there's a time limit by which we have to hear these cases. And if the board is not available, it could actually go to a point where we would have to forego the hearing of a student. They would not get their due process.
Trustee Mamala, but there has been cases, even with the current, or hearing officers, students were out of school 30 or 40 days because they couldn't get together. So I mean, that's not fair to them. And that's, I learned later, that's why these hearings weren't being heard. And I understand you all added a couple of more hearing officers. Is that true?
That's true.
To sort of expedite them. So it goes both ways. The students and parents are being, you know, disadvantaged either way, but not.
Well, it's the pleasure, it's the pleasure of my other board members. Go right ahead, continue.
No, it's just a prime example.
Whatever the pleasure the, my other board members are, but I will not support it.
Madam President?
Trustee Zono.
I'm in agreement with you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Trustee Miller.
I'm also in agreement. I don't think we're here to micromanage.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to move on?
Okay, moving on.
Well, are we going to take a vote? Two people going to say it, and that's the end of the story?
We're not voting now.
Well, I mean, you didn't hear from everyone else. You didn't ask my opinion.
What your opinion's going to be, it's going to be to do.
That's not the point. If you're going to run a meeting, run a meeting.
We're not voting, we're moving on. Let's go to twelve.
It's just to give us feedback on what we present to you. But ultimately, you'll have the opportunity to discuss it again when we put it on a board agenda.
Are we moving?
Moving on.
Policy twenty, or excuse me, sixty-two twenty, budget preparation. So basically, House Enrolled Act ten oh three, if a school corporation passes a school safety referendum, these newly developed budget funds should be added to the budget preparation process and are being added to options for budgetary preparation policy. Also, the policy is revised to include new requirements of reporting to the board at the time of budget preparation, any total transfers from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund, which we have seen through Matt Reese in his presentations.
Can you increment your PowerPoint, Dr. Green?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so this requires that the superintendent have a report prepared that gives fifteen, that shows any time there's more than 15% between the Education Fund and the Operations Fund. It also outlines the types of funds that we may have received. In our particular case, the referendum funds. And any, if we were to implement like a rainy day fund, all of those funds would have to be reported upon. And any time there's transfer, that report would have to be made by the superintendent of schools. The board directs the superintendent to present the budget to the board along with available information associated with each fund and sufficient time for proper review and discussion and compliance with state law. New language was also added about the transfers between the two funds. If you go to page two of two, whether the corporation did or not make progress in improving the ratio of student instructional expenditures to all other expenditures during the previous year. Basically, there are a number of things selected there. I did present this to, or not selected, excuse me. I did present this to our consultant, Matt Reese, and to Alicia Prusher. And basically, they chose not to select any of those items. And since this is a budgetary and finance thing, I respect their opinion.
Of course.
Questions?
Nope. Moving on.
Okay, budget hearing. Sixty-two thirty basically deals with the exact same thing. Sixty-two thirty is basically stating that you must have a hearing. And this is statutory law. There is nothing new about that. At the public hearing to adopt the budget, the corporation shall acknowledge whether the anticipated transfer amount of the Education Fund to the Operations Fund for the next calendar year will be 15%. will be 15% of the total revenue deposited in the Education Fund. And that is simply all that 6230 deals with.
We, we've discussed before how the state legislature put in this 15% as perhaps an artificial raise that if a school corporation spends more than 15% on operations, they would have to come and justify at the second year in a row of doing that in front of, I believe it's the DLGF, and justify why you're spending more than 15% of your operation, more than 15% of your Education Fund on operations.
Oh, after we.
Yeah.
Trustee Mamala.
Yes, trustee King.
Regarding our budget hearing. Now, basically, we've always had our budgets in September. Do we need to put a time on any of this? You know, so that, because we missed it, you know, you, you admitted yourself, Mr. Miller. You know, when I reminded you, we should have heard our budgets in September, and we're doing it, I guess, next month.
Well, the big, the big thing's ADM.
They can what, sir?
The big thing is, we, we need to know what the ADM count is to do an accurate budget.
Well, we've all, we met him prior to that, and that's why I, you know, I saw the email you sent to Matt, you know, indicating that, you know, we hadn't, we hadn't done it. So, should we, as a reminder, do we need to put a date in, in the policy to remind us? Because we missed the date.
We haven't missed any dates according to the statute for, for getting our budget hearing in and our budget. We're, we're 100% in compliance.
Well, that we normally do. Well, that we norm, okay, well, anyway. I brought it to your attention, and I saw the email you wrote, Matt. And if, if we're not going to be consistent, you know, every September, we normally have our budget hearing. And we can just move forward.
Yeah, the, the email was if you did bring up at the first September meeting a, a question about the budget. And my follow-up to Matt was that one of the trustees requested an update on when we were going to hear the budget. And he did, he did reply back with the information I sent to the board. But it wasn't that he wasn't prepping the budget. It was.
I'm not saying that, Mr. Miller.
Okay.
If we're ready to move on, policy 6520, payroll deductions. Basically, it just states that, the new policy states that, and it's not a new one, it's revised as well, that you must put in writing any time there's any type of payroll deduction change. It also gives you options that, if you look at page one of two, some of these have been checked. The local option, county income tax, Section 125, Section 403B, contributions to charitable organizations, payments to labor unions, all of these things, insurance, they can be taken out of the check through written authorization by the employee. It's not that these couldn't be done before. It's just simply that they wanted to clarify some of the language. If you'll notice, there are several things that are not checked, and it's just simply because those are not things we currently do deductions for. Questions?
Moving on.
7300, disposition of real property. 7300 is basically just talking about the vacant property, and this is, you know, kind of a hot-button issue right now. It does define what that property is and how it should be defined whenever you're listing it. It does talk about the value of that real property. But what it does, if you notice on page two of five, is it erases a lot of the language that was previously there, especially that language about the dollar for charter schools to take over vacant buildings. However, it does define it more clearly as to what happens to vacant buildings. And so, basically, if you are not going to occupy a building for 10 days or more, and you vote that that building should become vacant, then essentially, what this is saying is that you have to notify state and let them know that the building is available. However, there are some exemptions to that. If you are currently using the building or have reason to use the building, you're currently doing renovations on that building, and you will be utilizing the building at a later date, you can still hang on to those buildings. The charter school law that basically is coming into effect here, they're trying to define it even more. This is of particular interest, because we're not sure what's going to happen with this. So, we do expect to see a lot more changes coming along in this particular policy. If you'll go to page four of five, that's where it lists the procedure of what you can do and what you can't do with a building that is empty. A school building has been vacated to renovate the building for future use by the corporation, that is a building that does not have to be listed. A school building that has been vacated to demolish the building, that's also a building that does not need to be listed. Or an emergency manager of a distressed school corporation, you do not have to put your buildings on the list at that particular time. A lot of new language there, and I won't go into it, because a lot of it just deals with how big the building is and what exactly you can and cannot do with it. All of that is listed in our documents, and that is available for public view as well, so that you can kind of read through that. But the whole goal behind this is to clearly define whether or not a charter school can get a vacant building. Questions?
Moving on.
744003, small unmanned aircraft. And I'm going to apologize in advance, because I already was like, no, there is no way. So, basically, what we're talking about here is we're talking about droids and.
Droids.
Superintendent came in and he said, "But what if?" What if we want to, and this is a complete possibility. We're seeing companies that are now delivering using droids. The one thing that I was thinking more along the lines of is we don't want somebody on behalf of the school corporation using a droid. But option number two, so originally, I said option number one, which is, no, we're not having droids anywhere in the district. But basically, option number two really details the fact that the superintendent or whoever is in charge of that particular thing could basically say that they would like to see some pictures being taken of our new building, an aerial shot of something that's going on. And basically, droids are being used for that purpose. And so, we could actually see a purpose where a droid would not be a destructive property, but it might be something that could actually be very useful. And so, I am changing the option that we had selected and putting that as option two.
Which would still require approval from the superintendent. So, it doesn't give anyone carte blanche to use a drone. It would require that they have permission. But my thought is, we're, we're closing some buildings that are very important to people and to get a nice shot of some of these buildings. And we have this brand-new, beautiful school coming up. Drones can take some really nice pictures.
Yes.
So, that was just my thinking. It's not something that we would just have in normal process. But I just wanted to carve out that there could be a possibility, a unique scenario where we would want to authorize a drone. Because the top policy gives no wiggle room whatsoever. They're completely banned.
Good idea.
And please note, this is a new policy, so this is one that will have to go the distance as far as multiple readings. Okay? Policy number 8120, which is dealing with volunteers. And what this is primarily dealing with is the need to make sure that our volunteers are going through a full background check. And so, we went with option one. Each volunteer who is in direct contact with students will be required to submit a limited criminal history record check. That's very important, and it's very appropriate. Right now, we are starting with our new visitor entry system, which will do this for us in a matter of seconds. Whereas previously, we had to submit application. Two days later, they got it back. Sometimes it came back as unclear. Now, we'll be able to get that response immediately for any visitor who's going to be in our buildings. That is further broken down on page two of three, if you'll take a look at that. Page two of three, basically, these are all the things that we're looking for. If someone has been convicted or accused of any type of kidnapping, child-related crime, criminal deviant conduct, rape, all of those different things will fall here, even substance abuse. All of these things fall under things that we should be looking at whenever a visitor comes in the building, and they're going to have access to our children. Further, if you look at page three of three, without conferring the rights of an employee on a volunteer coach, the corporation shall comply regarding a volunteer coach, including the provisions of civil immunity regarding disclosures made about that volunteer coach. So, in other words, we have a reporting right there as well. So, volunteers are, are pretty much now being treated as our employees are. They have to have that background check.
It, to, to be clear, this also says, though, we're not conferring the rights of an employee. So, they're, a volunteer does not have the same due process as an employee.
That's correct, but we are treating them the same as an employee as far as making sure that they haven't been trouble.
Yes.
Okay. So, moving on.
Moving on. Want to be out of here by 10 o'clock.
We're trying to get you out of here. Public records, 8310. What this basically does is it defines what public records are. It's pretty much straight language. It is talking about destroying records and things like that, which are all statutorily mandated. So, there is no change here. The only thing you'll see that I wrote in on page one, I wrote in Lake County, because that's our county. And then, if you'll look at page three of four, option two. In order to assure the integrity of data maintained by the corporation's computer network and protect confidentiality, will not authorize enhanced access to public records on the computer network. However, records that are not confidential may be reviewed by the requesting party in paper form printed out for inspection by the PAO or the board employee acting under the direction of the PAO. Going down to page four of four, this is currently what we already do. We already, whenever we have a request for extensive record search, we do have to charge the requesting party, especially if it's going to take a person away from their job and have them request, or actually searching records and then printing them out. They may get charged for the printing cost and the time of labor.
Are, so are you suggesting we, we do adopt the bottom in, in green, or no?
Absolutely. We currently have that charge already, but it's just not at this rate. And it does not include the hourly rate of the person making the search currently. It just has to do with the persons, or the printing materials.
So, as I read it, the first five hours that it would take are included. But if it was, if the search was more substantial than five hours, that's where there would be a charge.
And this happens quite frequently, where you do have to do an in-depth search, or somebody will request several different records, and they're public records. And the thing about public records is you can find them on your own. But if you are requesting that the school system duplicate those records and actually get them for you and actually use the man-hours, then, of course, that, that cost would be passed on.
So, is their salary plus to $20?
Oh, it doesn't go to the employee. It actually comes in as, it goes into.
I say, I say, is their salary top plus?
Well, oh, no, it's not their salary. It's basically, it's a, it's kind of like a standard salary for an hourly employee. So, if you have a person that's making $15 an hour, it might be charged at 10.
That clears that up.
Because it's not actually going to the employee, because the employee's work is the employee's work.
I didn't, I didn't say, I just, I understood you to say this, well, anyway. You told me what I need to know, but I didn't imply that.
I, I think she was thinking, the third line there, it says, "Shall be the lesser of the hourly rate of the person making the search, or $20 per hour."
And not to belabor this, but it's the cost of the hour, and it's the cost of the printing, and the cost of all those things are added together to make the $20, if that makes sense. Okay, 8400 is school safety. And these are all the things that our current school safety officer is working on. Basically, environmental health issues, safety issues, indoor air quality, animals in the classroom, and idling vehicles on the property. All of these things are things that he deals with on a normal basis. The Safe Schools Committee is something that he is currently working on putting together at each school, as well as a district-wide Safe School Committee. And then, dealing with some of the issues that are specific to the classroom. If you'll go to page two of two.
I think it's two of eight.
Two of eight, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Getting ahead of myself here. So, we'll work in connection with local law enforcement, the State Department of Education, all of the school's safety personnel that we have. We don't have actually titled as a school safety specialist, but we do have our Director of School Safety, as well as our officers that work in the building. And then, they have several people that they work with as well. And then, local law enforcement, the fire marshal, all of those people are part of that safety committee and are currently already working with our schools. And so, one of the things that he has done is kind of pull that committee together as a planning committee for things like evacuation and all the different drills that we'll be working on and that we need to constantly work on. If you look at page three of eight, it does give you the job description and the expectation of a school safety specialist. And further down the page, this is something that was added, the bleeding control kits. Again, we want to make sure that any time there's like blood flow or something like that, that we have a way of controlling it instantly, because as we know, that's, you know, there are several things. I won't say the, what Nurse Ligon tells me to say about blood, but I will say this, that it can, it is something that you don't want to touch if you see it, okay? So, basically, what we're saying here is that a bleeding control kit means a first aid response kit, and it just tells you everything that has to be in that kit. And all of those kits are currently being supplied to all of our schools with the work of Nurse Ligon, as well as Officer Suarez. Okay, that continues all the way down to our school resource officers and what their part is in all of this. If you notice, there's a lot of new language. I'm trying to summarize it as quickly as I possibly can. On page five of eight, that new language continues. And again, it is telling you all the training that must be implemented, as well as who these officers are, or who these people are within the school building. And then, it tells you, if you go down to six of eight, it starts to talk about things that must be reported. Seclusion, chemical restraint, mechanical restraint, and physical restraints. The corporation has to report all instances of these things. If you go to page seven of eight, the only selection there is that if you're thinking about persistently dangerous schools, basically, the corporation is a reporter. The corporation is a reporter in all instances, and so, basically, we're leaving it as such. If you go to page eight of eight, a corporation police officer is defined as to what their job is in the district.
But, but correct me if I'm wrong, corporation police is like its own option, and we are not recommending that we start our own police department?
No, it's not our own police department, but we do have many sites within our schools. And so, basically, they access the current police department, and so, we, they're like little sites in the schools. And they have, they are using all of their resources. So, basically, that's why we're looking at the corporation. We're not calling it a police corporation. We're calling it ours. It's something that we utilize as a district.
But it reads corporation police officer.
I'm sorry?
It reads corporation police officer.
They are under our purview when they're working here.
But it, I, this one, can we, because I'm not tracking it the same way as you, Dr. Green. Could we get some clarity from Monica on, on this one?
We sure can.
Because I, I do think what it, what this section is suggesting is the creation of a School City of Hammond Police Department, because it's even recommending they would have to take an oath. As opposed to what we've traditionally done, for anybody watching, is nearly all of our police officers are Hammond Police Department off-duty police officers. There's one or two exceptions, but. There's one or two exceptions, but it is, there are some school corporations where there are no local police. For example, they're only serviced by county police, and so, they have considered starting their own corporate police department within their own school corporation. I think that that might be what this is referring to.
Because this is a little overboard, sounds like a police state to me.
We can get clarity. I mean, the school district currently employs sixty police officers. And so, I mean, we can get clarity in exactly how to word that.
I'm sorry, just a quick question. It's not checked, though, the corporate police, the section that we're talking about, right? It's not checked, so it doesn't apply.
That would be my understanding of it, yes.
Right.
Right. I mean, we're not talking about creating a police department in the schools. And no, it's not checked, you're right about that.
Right.
But what I'm talking about is...
The language is there, though, the language suggests that.
But if it's not checked, it doesn't go in your policy.
It wouldn't be in our final policy, right? So, I think, I'm confused.
I'm confused. It's just too strong of a language for me.
We don't...
One other question regarding the equipment. Do we have the heart defibrillator?
We have defibrillators in every building, yes.
Every building, okay.
We have for quite some time, yeah.
Okay. I didn't see it in this report, but okay. Very good.
Or is that what I just did?
No, we were on eighty-four-hundred.
Okay.
But this is the, you had mentioned that this is kind of the second half of the environmental items.
Thank you. Okay, so eighty-four-oh-five, the main thing that we needed to change in this one was because this was the first year we actually had an animal in the classroom. And this is something that's going to become more and more common. So, if you look at page two of four, the language was updated, and this was a requested policy. It is revised, it's current, but we updated the language because there was no policy that clearly addressed animals in the classroom. And even if it's like a comfort animal, a seeing dog, or something like that, we wanted to make sure that we had some way of monitoring that. Usually, when these animals are admitted into the classroom, it doesn't mean that it's something that will go on forever. And so, what is the best way to handle that? And after seeking advice of attorneys and basically looking at how it went with the animal that we did have in the classroom this past year, it is suggested that this be on a semester basis, and then reevaluate it at the end of each semester to see if it should continue. So, it's not saying that it's only for the semester, especially if the child needs it, but it is saying that it's something that will be constantly on the front burner of being evaluated. The rest of the policy remains unchanged. Are there any questions about that?
Moving on.
That is the emergency preparedness plans and drills. And there's a little bit of change here. The policy remains the same on one of two, on two of two. There is some, if you notice the stricken red language in favor of the new language in green. At least one man-made occurrence disaster drill must be an active shooter drill and must be conducted within ninety calendar days of the beginning of the school year, and that is new law that has to be incorporated. And if you'll notice down at the bottom, I inserted tornado drill, but that was already included, so we really don't have to do that. That's the oldest drill we've been practicing. But basically, it's in there. So, what we are suggesting is that we will have that one additional drill within ninety days of the beginning of the school year, and that's for any man-made occurrence or No questions?
Nope. Moving on.
Coach training. And again, we're doing this, and coach training, I didn't even put in here, because, in the PowerPoint slide, because it's basically saying the exact same thing we just went over on all the other ones. We're going to make sure that they have concussion awareness. It does add equipment fitting in there, heat and emergency preparedness, and proper techniques in working with our students. This does include football coaches, by the way, and I know someone asked that question. If you look at page two of four, we are saying again that all head coaches and coaches will go through all these protocols, concussion protocol. They will also go through sudden cardiac arrest and heat-related issues. The superintendent shall require that each person employed as a coach or activity, or athletic activity sponsor. So, basically, we're saying that both of those people will be qualified when cleared with a background check, because, again, they will have access to students. And if we go through pages three of four, and four of four, that's all the new language, citing all the things that they must be checked, background checked for. If there are no questions? Eighty-four-sixty-two, child abuse and neglect.
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Miller.
I'm sorry, can we go back to eighty-four-twenty, just for one second? I had a question about the man-made occurrence, it's basically, it's going to be an active shooter drill, correct?
Yes.
And will those things, it will be pre-planned, it will be pre-announced, it won't, those won't be surprise-type drills, correct?
No, the drills that they've done in the past, and I know what you're talking about, because they have found that children suffer almost like PTSD after they go through an active shooter training that is not announced, and they don't really know what's going on. Lot of fear there. And so, basically, the newer drills that they're doing, they let the students know exactly what's going on. They're not doing the, where you're hearing the gunshots flying over your heads. They're not doing all that. They're using lights and some other things to make sure that the students do sense the urgency, but it's not going to scare them so badly that they can't sleep tonight.
All right. And then parents will be notified?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And you have to realize, this is relatively new thing that is being mandated now.
Right.
And so, essentially, what this is going to look like, we're not talking about this school year, we're talking about next school year.
Right.
And what this is going to look like, we're really not quite sure, but we know what it's not going to look like.
Okay.
And it's not going to be one of those scenarios that we've heard about.
Not going to be shooting teachers with airsoft rifles?
Bags or any of those things, you know?
I've read some of those things, yeah. And sometimes even when you know it's happening, it's still, you know, it's frightening.
It's going to be frightening, no matter what, but, I mean, with the insurance that you are not actually seeing guns and bullets and all that, I think we'll be okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry to make you backtrack, but just as I was, I was processing, I'm like, I need to know, so...
Trustee Miller. Trustee King.
I have one other question on this as well. So, the incident we had at Hammond High, so, in other words, if that ever happens again, this kind of program would be in place.
It prepares you in case it does happen. But nothing prepares you for the real thing.
Right, right. But what prepares, well, not so much prepare, once it has happened, I remember, I think I'd asked for some kind of consultant to go into school and talk with the students, and do you see any value in that? Because in most school districts, you know, when you have these kind of shootings or alleges or whatever, somebody actually goes into the school and talks to the kids, and we didn't do that with Hammond High, and...
I believe we did, yeah.
We did. Actually, we did. We had several adults doing that. You know, part of our MTSS program is that our counselors, Dr. Rushing, all of those folks went in, and they went in and handled that piece. But Officer Suarez, when he went in, you know, he was looking for, where are our problem areas at? And talking to the kids, what did you notice? And so, basically, I think putting all those resources together is how we got a clear picture of where our problems lie and what we really need to do so that that type of thing doesn't happen again. That's not to say that it can't happen again, it could.
Well, the reason I asked, I had asked, and no one followed up with me, and that's why I raised the question. Thank you. Found out later.
Apologize for that.
Trustee King, could you put your mask on, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Policy eighty-four-sixty-two, child abuse and neglect. So, basically, we, as I said before, are obligated reporters. Anytime we notice that there is anything to do with child abuse or suspected child abuse, we do have an obligation to then report that. This policy was basically put in place to revise and clarify that language that all school personnel basically has an obligation to report to the Department of Child Services if a child is suffering from suspected abuse or neglect. Additionally, that we must work with law enforcement to ensure that those students are well taken care of. So, if you look at page one of two, basically, that is just outlining the new language. But there's one thing in the middle of the page that's a little bit different. If the parent or a member of the household is not the subject of the investigation, the corporation may notify the parent that a report has been made, but the corporation is not obligated to notify that the report was made. And that is simply because if the parent or whoever, or guardian, is a part of that investigation, we want to make sure that they're not alerted, and it could put the child in further danger. But in most cases in this district, if there's something, and, you know, it's something that can be reported, it is reported to all the parties, including the parent. So, how are we training on what the obligation of a reporter is? We do in-person presentations, and that is with a lot of our teachers, new teachers. And we also have, again, that electronic means of going through testing, looking at videos, going through scenarios. So, in other words, electronic notification. Questions?
Nope. Moving on.
Transportation.
I'm sorry, just quickly, should there have been two boxes checked off on two-point-two then? So, it was, it should be A and B, or just B?
It should be A and B.
For both, for, okay. I guess I'm only seeing B, so... All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Green.
And I think I retouched that one because of the in-person presentation with new teachers.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, if you look at eighty-six-hundred, transportation, this policy was revised to reflect state law pertaining to school bus safety made by Senate Enrolled Act Two in the current state law for use of school buses. Again, this is a current policy that we already had. They did add new language that on or before September first, 2019, and each September first thereafter, the school corporation must review the corporation's school bus routes and school bus safety policies to improve the safety for students and adults. This automatically takes place simply because we have to reroute the buses every year with new students. If you'll notice, we have checked, school buses shall be purchased or housed and maintained by the school corporation. Essentially, we do have our own bus fleet, and so, the first box there is checked. A special-purpose bus is any motor vehicle designed and constructed to accommodate more than ten passengers that meets federal school bus safety standards. They must have the flashing lights, the arm, the security arm, and everything that goes with a regular bus. A special-purpose bus may be used to transport homeless and foster students. Remember, we talked about in a previous policy, when we have those students who live out a district, a lot of times, we will use a special-purpose's bus to transport them, especially if it's only one or two students. And then, if you'll look on page two of three, we have checked that if the special-purpose bus has a capacity of sixteen passengers, the operator must hold a valid license. Now, this does include the operator's show for commercial and public passenger license. Further down, on the same page, two of three, if a school bus driver must load or unload on a major thoroughfare, and that would be like a state road or something like that, then basically, that new route that the students are using must be presented in a board meeting for board approval. And this is only for elementary students, by the way. Okay? Other questions?
Moving on.
Moving on. Okay. And then, I think we did that thirty-one-twenty.
Yeah.
That's why it was...
If the board, excuse me for just a minute, I will go run and print off thirty-two-twenty so we can get it included, because that's the one that we had, that we were missing.
Okay.
Thirty-one-twenty-oh-seven.
We already did thirty-one-twenty. That was that one we had to go back to that we couldn't find in the very...
What about oh-seven, thirty-one-twenty-oh-seven?
We're going to, Superintendent Miller's going to bring that on now. He's copying that one.
He's copying that one. And then, there's an, if you would go to twenty-five, we'll go ahead and get that one in while he's doing that, so we don't waste everyone's time. This is something that came up today. If you went to the ISBA conference, if you did that virtual conference today, one of the things they were talking about was the new Title IX, and that we were making sure that all of those requirements have been updated on our website, that we had a contact person. They were giving some very specific guidelines about how we should address Title IX grievances. And essentially, we have gone through this process before with OCR, where we were basically, we didn't have a trained person in the district. We do now, we have two, actually. We have an investigator, as well as a coordinator, who actually addresses these issues. And this is all reports of sexual discrimination or any type of situation in that realm. And so, basically, what is our clear policy? Now, there was a policy that was offered by NEOLA, and that policy was good, but basically, it did not address all the things we heard about today. And so, I am presenting to you a policy that was not in your original packet, and I'm presenting it because when I found it today, I wanted to make sure we got it on. And ISBA did offer a policy that goes directly with what the state is requiring from us. And so, if you look at it, it just basically outlines, and what we're going to do is we're going to get this incorporated into NEOLA, but we have to have this in place now. And so, what we're doing is we're basically looking at our reporting of those Sexual Discrimination Acts, and I am in tab twenty-five, I'm on page one. And if you flip over to page two, it even outlines who has to be talked to, and it gives a process of going through this. I know when I worked for the college, one of the things were, you had to have people who were separated that could not talk to each other. Well, basically, here, being a school district, we know we have to speak to each other, we have to talk to the principals, but it gives you the reporting structure, and it tells you exactly what needs to take place. But then, the actual policy statement is on page three. The school corporation will promptly, and I'm right on the middle of the page on that one through four, investigate all complaints. And this is what's so important, we're promptly going to do the investigation. So, there is no way that you can basically say, you know, well, I'm going to see what happens and what pans out. Once you get the report, it must be investigated. Take appropriate action to stop any harassment that is still occurring. Take appropriate action against any student or school employee who violates the policy. And then, take any other action reasonable, calculated to the end, to prevent further harassment. So, make sure it doesn't happen again. And all of this needs to be presented in a very specific way. You need to present each step of what has happened in the investigation so that the person knows that this is occurring, and they know that it's not being, in a sense, not addressed. So, all of these things are outlined on our website. Today, we are updating the names of the people who are the direct contacts. Our process, this entire document is going to be on our website as well. We are going to do a FAQ that has a step-by-step how you make these reports. This is something that's becoming, it's becoming huge. And if you don't address this, you can, there are so many problems that you're going to run into. One of the things that we want to make sure of is that a person feels comfortable reporting these types of issues to us. And so, we are committed to following this in every way possible, but Monica has, Monica But Monica has, Monica Comrade has reviewed this particular. She did not write it for us. She basically wrote it for ISBA. And so when ISBA signed off on it as well, I think with a few additions for the district itself, I think we are perfectly fine to use this instead of the NEOLAs policy.
There is a NEOLAs policy?
There is a NEOLAs policy.
Is it stronger than the NEOLAs?
This one is stronger than the NEOLAs policy. It actually gives the grievance procedure and it outlines step-by-step what the plaintiff can expect as they're going through that process. And that's the most important piece is to make sure that communication is being had with the person making the complaint.
Well, our racial discrimination grievance procedure, is it just as strong? Do we have one just as strong as a sexual harassment?
Actually, all of our grievance procedures are that strong because harassment is harassment. It doesn't matter what kind of harassment it is, so it follows the same steps.
So-
So if someone feels like they're being-
If they're feeling they've been racially discriminated against, they're-
They can use that same practice, yes.
They're comfortable with that.
Well, I would hope so, yes. I've had people come to-
I mean, it's plaguing our district. I was just wondering how would we be dealing with it.
I don't believe it's plaguing, but anyway. All right, moving on.
Okay, and then finally?
It was, if you want to go back to thirty-two twenty point oh two, I believe it's probably under number four. It was supplemental pay-
Supplemental pay for teachers?
Yes.
Okay. This is a policy that was basically put in place, again, House Enrolled Act ten oh two. And it adds one more option category for teachers to receive supplemental payment. And basically, it originally had three different categories. And the three categories, I believe, were STEM, which would be science, technology, engineering and math. It adds CTE education as one of them. And Superintendent Miller, could you help me out with the first two?
Yep. I'll just read it. Teacher who teaches in an AP course or has earned a master's degree from an accredited post-secondary educational institution in a content area directly related to the subject matter of a dual-credit course or another course taught by the teacher. The second choice was a teacher who is special education professional or who teaches in the area of STEM. The third choice was an elementary school teacher who earns a master's degree in math, reading or literacy. And the last choice, as you said, was, and the new one, was a CTE teacher.
I think the one thing to remember about this policy is it says you may. It's not saying that every person who meets one of those categories would automatically be considered for some type of additional compensation. It just says that that may be utilized. And currently, the district already utilizes three of those categories. I think all of them except CTE.
The sheet that I copied, Dr. Green, has just two of them checked. Are you recommending that we would have the option to do all of them?
The option to do them all, yes.
Okay. Because as you say, it's may, it's not shall.
It's a may, it's not a shall.
And this is the discretion of the superintendent. Is this a one-time or it could be more than one-time, Mr. Miller?
So supplemental pay does not necessarily have to be, does not necessarily have to be part of their base salary. It could be the type of thing like for a CTE teacher. Let's say that it's the auto-technology teacher and they want to open up the shop at night so to have students to come in and work on cars. So we could authorize supplemental pay for something like that.
Is that a stipend? Is that, how is that different from a stipend? Or is it different?
I don't want to misspeak.
It can be handled in multiple ways. In the past, it's been handled either as a stipend. It can be added to base as an initial offering in order to entice someone to come to the district because it's a very, very hard-to-fill area. And basically, it can be handled in any of those ways.
So if it's something that's going to be a core job function that year in and year out they would do, we would rather have that as an increase to their base. If it's something that may change year to year and is not a core job function, that would be more appropriate for a stipend. Am I saying that correctly?
You are.
Yeah, okay. Because we've seen some of that and we're trying to correct it where we recognize it's really what should be part of someone's job as opposed to extra duty. We have been correcting those as they've come up.
Trustee Mamala.
Trustee King.
I have just one other question regarding the sexual harassment grievance. You indicated we already have hired the two coordinators. Who are they?
Linda Fulla Love is our coordinator and I am the administrator for that program.
Thank you. So the ones that we, Trustee Mamala?
Trustee King.
So the ones that we didn't discuss tonight, you're saying they're automatically-
The administrative policies are the only thing that we did not discuss tonight. And as I said before, administrative policy has already been approved in a previous policy grouping. So essentially, the administrative piece of it is only the piece that we utilize inside as a procedural piece. So if it's something on, let's just say, transportation, then essentially, there will be an administrative policy on transportation that will not need to be reviewed. But we do always send them to the Board so that you can look at it, but it is not something that is voted on.
We have a question. Can you ask a question?
If you have a question, absolutely.
Thirty-one twenty oh seven. I didn't under, is this additional, it says employment of casual resource personnel. Does someone explain, this is additional personnel that we're hiring at the discretion of whoever? And what's the pay scale? I mean, it's, I mean, obviously, it sounds like you're creating positions. There's no pay scale. I mean, I don't understand that.
This is, all of these things will still go through the Board. If we were to bring somebody on, because this is somebody for in-house training, it might be somebody for an in-service that we're doing, some type of instructional programs like the gentleman that came before you and was talking about what he's going to do with the curriculum. These are all things, it's just saying that we have the opportunity to solicit these types of people, but they still come before you because there are funds going out, so they have to be voted on by the Board.
But I never knew they were considered casual resource personnel. That's why, this is new to me. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, yeah. That's, I mean, that's just a term that this particular policy uses, but they are not our employees.
Okay. I know a consultant is not our employee. I understand that. But again, I, well. And the deal with crowdfunding, so we're saying we're not going to do any crowdfunding?
We currently have a policy on crowdfunding and it does not utilize any of those steps. And so basically, no, we're not utilizing that particular policy as an administrative policy.
To me at all. It just would have been nice if they'd have been separated, so I would have known I didn't have to, you know.
In the future, I'll make sure they're separated.
I appreciate it. I thought they were all here for discussion, but they were not.
If there's no other questions, that concludes our agenda item.
All right. That concludes our public work session tonight on policies. I will call for adjournment.
So moved.
Back in.
Thank you for coming.